Aloha. If you're just joining us, welcome. We're gonna give it a few more minutes before we get started to let other people join. It's five thirty right now, so we'll give it another two or three minutes or so. Hey, aloha and mahalo everyone for joining. My name is David Sakota. I'm the Fisheries Program Manager for the State of Hawaii Department of Land and Natural Resources, Division of Aquatic Resources. I'll be conducting tonight's public hearing along with the DAR staff at our in-person host sites. It is now five thirty-three PM, and this public hearing is called to order. This is a formal statewide public hearing on proposed amendments to Hawaii Administrative Rules Chapter thirteen dash ninety-five, Rules Regulating the Taking and Selling of Certain Marine Resources. The primary purpose of this proposal is to update rules for Manini, Kala, Uhu, and Papa'i Ko'oloa or Kona crab, to establish rules for Kole and to update the chapter with other various housekeeping amendments. As required by law, the proposed rules have been drafted in Ramseer format, copies of which can be found in the Announcements section of the DAR website. Those attending the meeting in person may ask DAR staff for a copy. This public hearing is being simultaneously livestreamed to the DAR YouTube channel for anyone wishing to observe the public hearing but not provide testimony. For your convenience, the address to the DAR YouTube channel is at the top of this slide, and the link to the livestream has also been pasted into the chat. The purpose of this hearing is to provide the public the opportunity to provide comments in the form of oral and written testimony on these proposed amendments. Approval to conduct this public hearing was obtained from the Board of Land and Natural Resources at their board meeting on May twelfth, twenty twenty-three. The legal notice of this public hearing was published in the July second, twenty twenty-three Sunday issue of the Honolulu Star Advertiser. Additionally, notice of this public hearing was posted on the Draft Rules and Public Notices page of the DAR website, where digital copies of the draft rules in Ramseer format can be found, as well as posted on the Announcements page of the DAR website. Hearing procedures: First, we'll watch a short video explaining the proposed changes to the administrative rules. We will then begin the public testimony period, which will be conducted as follows. Everyone testifying via Zoom was required to pre-register in order to get the link to testify. We will keep registration open throughout the public hearing, and we'll monitor our email in case anyone has trouble registering or joining the Zoom meeting to provide their testimony. However, if you are unable to join via Zoom, you may still provide oral testimony at one of the in-person hearing locations listed in this slide, or you may submit written testimony by following the directions at the bottom of this slide. Everyone testifying in person at one of the host sites should have written their information down on the sign-in sheet provided at the host site. Those attending in person who have not registered but would like to provide testimony can alert the DAR public hearing officer at your in-person site at this time, and your name will be added to the list. It is important that everyone who wishes to testify provide their name and contact information, so we have an accurate record of everyone providing testimony. You will be called by a member of the DAR staff when it is your turn to testify. We ask that all individuals attending virtually keep their microphones muted when not speaking. We will take testimony in the following order. First, we will take in-person testimony from people who have been signed up to testify, beginning on Lanai, then Molokai, then Maui. And once all in-person testimony is gathered, we will take Zoom testimony. I will then take testimony from anyone else wishing to provide testimony that was not called upon. And last, if we have additional time, I'll allow those wishing to provide additional testimony the opportunity to do so. Please keep your testimony brief and on the subject to allow everyone the opportunity to testify. Each person providing testimony will be given three minutes. Please be aware that if you go beyond three minutes, I will kindly ask you to conclude your testimony. We are recording this hearing to make a written record, so please state your full name, where you're calling in from, before giving your testimony. Make sure to speak clearly, so we accurately record your testimony for the record. Please turn off the live YouTube stream of this hearing while testifying, as it will cause an echo. Please remember to respect the opinions of all testifiers, and that this hearing is not an opportunity for accusations or rebuttals. There may be differing opinions. Everyone will have an opportunity to voice their opinion for the department to consider. All testimony should be directed to me, not to the audience. And please note that this hearing is simultaneously being streamed on YouTube. The livestream will be recorded and preserved on YouTube as a matter of public record. Please be aware that by offering your oral testimony today, you are consenting to being audio and video recorded if your camera is on. Let's begin with a short video on the background explaining the proposed administrative rules.
Proposed Amendments to Hawaii Administrative Rules Chapter Thirteen dash ninety-five, Rules Regulating the Taking and Selling of Certain Marine Resources, Papa'i Ko'oloa or Kona crab. DAR has identified the need to amend the rules for Papa'i Ko'oloa based on a number of factors. In twenty eighteen, a stock assessment was conducted, which suggests that the Papa'i Ko'oloa population is healthy. There is currently an annual catch limit, or ACL, in place, and current harvest numbers have been well below the established ACL, indicating that an increase in harvest would be sustainable to Papa'i Ko'oloa populations. Current regulations that prohibit the take of any female Papa'i Ko'oloa result in eighty percent discard rates due to catch being female or undersized. Additionally, an extended close season will help prevent catch of females with eggs. Current rules for Papa'i Ko'oloa are a minimum carapace length of four inches, no taking of females with or without eggs, and a closed season of May through August. The proposed amendments to the Papa'i Ko'oloa rules keep the same minimum size of four inches, but allows the take of females without eggs and extends the close season an additional month from May through September. Proposed Amendments to Hawaii Administrative Rules Chapter Thirteen dash ninety-five, Rules Regulating the Taking and Selling of Marine Resources, Manini, Kole, Kala, and Uhu. Pictured here are the fish species with new or amended rules within this proposal. They are Manini, or convict tang, Kole, or goldering surgeonfish, Kala, or blue-spine unicornfish, and all species of Uhu, or parrotfish. Manini, Kole, Kala, and Uhu are all important food fish. They are important to both recreational and subsistence fisheries, and in some cases, sustain commercial fisheries as well. Because of their widespread importance to fishing, DAR wants to take a proactive approach to ensuring that their populations are sustained in perpetuity. Also, increasing non-fishing threats put added pressure onto the resource. Coral bleaching, poor water quality, and habitat loss are just some threats to these fisheries and are expected to get worse with climate change and a growing human population. Fisheries management may not address these threats directly, but will offer these species some relief as future action including land-based initiatives increase. Additionally, herbivores play a crucial role on reefs, maintaining balance and providing the right conditions for corals to flourish. Large-bodied Uhu in particular aid in the settlement of larval coral with no redundancy in the ecosystem, meaning there are no other species to fill the role they play within the ecosystem if they are depleted. The current rules for Manini are a minimum size of five inches. The proposed rule would increase the minimum length to six inches to match the upper range of the L fifty or the length where approximately fifty percent of the population has reached reproductive maturity. There is no current statewide rule for Kole. The proposed rules include a minimum size for Kole of five inches. Although the minimum size is conservative when compared to the L fifty for Kole of three point three to three point nine inches, the proposed minimum size is consistent with the size that most spearfishers harvest Kole. Currently, the statewide rule for Kala is a minimum length of fourteen inches with no bag limit. The current minimum length is consistent with the L fifty for Kala at just under fourteen inches. The proposed rules for non-commercial take of Kala keep the minimum size limit at fourteen inches, but also include a bag limit of two per person per day. As a means to reduce the commercial take of Kala while still maintaining the commercial fishery, DAR proposes separate rules for the commercial taking and selling of Kala. The proposed commercial rules for Kala would require a commercial Kala fisher to obtain a separate commercial Kala fishing permit in addition to a commercial marine license, or CML, which is required for all persons wishing to sell their catch. The permit fee would be one hundred dollars annually in addition to the fee for a CML, and in order to maintain eligibility for a commercial Kala fishing permit, permit holder must have caught and sold at least one hundred pounds of Kala within the previous year if they had a commercial Kala fishing permit within the last twelve months. The proposed rules for commercial Kala fishing permit holders are a commercial daily bag limit of fifty Kala per permit holder per day, no commercial harvest or sale during the Kala spawning season of April through July, an annual catch limit, or ACL, of ten thousand pounds. When the ACL is reached, the fishery will be closed for commercial harvest or sale for the rest of the year. Additionally, the proposed rules requires dealers who sell Kala to register as a commercial Kala dealer. With the exception of Maui, the current statewide rules for Uhu Paluka Luka, Uhu Ele Ele, Uhu Ahu Ula, and Uhu Uli Uli, which are collectively referred to as large-bodied Uhu, is a minimum length of twelve inches with no bag limit. The proposed rules for non-commercial take of large-bodied Uhu would prohibit the take of Uhu Ele Ele and Uhu Uli Uli, the terminal phase, blue, large-bodied Uhu, increase the minimum size for Uhu Paluka Luka and Uhu Ahu Ula, the initial phase, red, large-bodied Uhu, from twelve inches to fourteen inches, and impose a combined total non-commercial bag limit of two per person per day for all Uhu species, both large-bodied and small-bodied, mirroring the Maui Uhu rules. Again, with the exception of Maui, the current statewide rule for small-bodied species of Uhu is a minimum length of twelve inches, noting that Po Nuhu Nuhu and yellow-barred parrotfish are not regulated. The proposed rule would apply the Maui rules statewide with a minimum length of ten inches for non-commercial take of all small-bodied species of Uhu. Also, as mentioned in the previous slide, small-bodied Uhu would be included within the combined total non-commercial bag limit of two per person per day for all Uhu species. Similar to Kala, the proposed rules include separate rules for commercial Uhu fishers and dealers. The proposed commercial rules for Uhu would require a commercial Uhu fisher to obtain a separate commercial Uhu fishing permit, which is a separate permit from the commercial Kala fishing permit, in addition to a commercial marine license. The permit fee would be one hundred dollars annually in addition to the fee for a commercial marine license. And in order to maintain eligibility for a commercial Uhu fishing permit, a permit holder must have caught and sold at least three hundred forty pounds of Uhu within the previous year if they had a commercial Uhu fishing permit within the last twelve months. The proposed rules for commercial Uhu fishing permit holders are a commercial daily bag limit of thirty Uhu per permit holder per day, a commercial slot limit of fourteen to twenty inches, meaning a minimum size of fourteen inches and a maximum size of twenty inches, no commercial harvest or sale during the Uhu spawning season of February through May, an annual catch limit of thirty-four thousand pounds. Again, when the ACL is reached, the fishery will be closed for commercial harvest or sale for the rest of the year. And only Uhu Paluka Luka, or initial phase red-lipped parrotfish, is allowed for commercial taking and selling. Additionally, the proposed rules requires dealers who sell Uhu to register as a commercial Uhu dealer. To illustrate the allowable catch of all Uhu species, here are all the species that are proposed to be regulated, which would be all Uhu species, both large-bodied and small-bodied. For non-commercial take, Uhu Uli Uli and Uhu Ele Ele would be prohibited as indicated in this slide. For commercial take, all Uhu would be prohibited except Uhu Paluka Luka.
We have now reached the testimony portion of this public hearing. As a reminder, the address to the DAR YouTube channel is at the top of this slide, and a link to the livestream has also been pasted into the chat. So if you just want to listen in to this hearing without providing testimony, you're welcome to log off the Zoom meeting and view the YouTube livestream of the hearing. If you remain in the Zoom room, you'll be called upon by a member of the DAR staff when it is your turn to testify. We ask that all individuals attending virtually keep their microphones muted when not speaking. As I mentioned earlier, we'll take testimony in the following order. First, we will take in-person testimony from people who have been signed up to testify, beginning on Lanai, then Molokai, and then on Maui. Once all in-person testimony is gathered, we'll take Zoom testimony. As a reminder, please keep your testimony to three minutes in order to ensure that everyone who signed up has a chance to give testimony. If there is extra time at the end of everyone on the list, and you would like more time to testify, we will allow those who already spoke to give additional testimony. I will now stop sharing my screen, so everyone providing testimony can be clearly seen. Next, um, we'll begin taking any in-person testimony on Lanai. Adam, I'll hand it off to you.
No one would like to provide testimony here at Lanai. Thanks, David.
Okay, thank you. Next, we'll take any in-person testimony on Molokai. Luna or Kristi, I'll hand it off to you.
So yes, we have, we have, um, one, two, three, four, five, six people so far to testify. Uh, we're gonna start. Hold on, yeah?
Aloha.
David, my name is Porsha Knackenberg, and I wanna put something on record. Um, I represent Association of Hawaiian Homestead Lands, also known as ALL. These are waitlisters. They also meet, the, they have descendants from pre- previous to seventeen seventy-eight. They are Hawaiians of half percent or more Hawaiians, uh, descendants. Um, I'm, I'm a little bit concerned. In fact, I'm gonna reserve my contested, my contest this hearing, but I'm gonna reserve it for these reasons, and I have a recommendation. Um, in forty-three CFR, we are identifying self-determination and self-governance. Um, this process, especially is I I know this is a pilot project, so is two thousand fourteen your current version? I, this is a question to you folks. My three minutes is running. This pilot version, two thousand fourteen, is this your current version of this, of, um, community-based subsistence fishing area? That's my question. Why do you want to answer?
So this is, um, there's not a time to, for us to answer questions. Um, but if you provide it in a testimony format, you know, we can address those comments, um, when we, um, when we summarize the testimony, so if you could make it a comment.
Okay, okay, and so let me move on, and if, if that is the case, then I am going to say that this whole process has infringed in our Hawaii rights by not providing beneficiary consultation. Um, they have been, you've been utilizing community, public meetings, small group, uh, meetings, but never the beneficiary consultation, which is the native Hawaiians, small end, okay? We're not talking about twenty-five percent. We're talking about the descendants that this process is impacting, is our livelihood. And so with that being said, I again wanna say that I am asking you folks for beneficiary consultation, and if you guys have any concerns of facilitating it, I am requesting that the Department of Interior steps in as the inter-agency coordinator. Mahalo.
Hey, mahalo.
And I oppose process, um, and this ruling from day one. Mahalo.
Hey, mahalo.
Yeah, go get my mom. Thank you.
How's it, Dave? My name is Dr. Rollitz, yeah, how I get it right, and also the Paul from Molokai. You know, you guys already have rules in there for years and years and years. Now you guys go to island, island, and try to be, change it to the rules. You know, we, we've been trying to work with you guys from day one, and every time we get meeting with you guys, you guys are changing something. You know, you guys are operating all Hawaiians over here. You know, Maui cannot handle what they get. At Maui, don't interrupt Molokai. Let Molokai be Molokai. Cause that's what we are. We take care of our own ground, you know, Molokai. That's why I oppose these things that you guys get very, very much. Thank you.
Hey, mahalo.
What's up, David?
Aloha.
Ready? Okay, aloha. My name is Godfrey Akaka, Junior President for the Native Hawaiian Gathering Rights Association. I represent many families across the state. We are in opposition to the herbivore proposal for several reasons. Number one, Article twelve, Section seven of the Hawaii State Constitution states, quote, "The state reaffirmed and shall protect all rights customarily and traditionally exercised for subsistence, cultural and religious purposes, and possessed by Aha'ua tenants who are descendants of native Hawaiians who inhabited the Hawaiian islands prior to seventeen seventy-eight, subject to the right of, of the state to regulate such rights." The purpose and spirit of this section of the law was specifically written to protect our traditional and customary practices, not to find loopholes to slowly diminish and regulate us all of our traditional and customary practices. What is our traditional and customary practice? We eat fish, specifically Uhu and Kala. We also catch fish enough for our large families as well as neighbors and kupuna, depending on the practitioner and needs for harvest. That is why traditionally and historically, there have never been bag limits for subsistence fishermen. There are other reasons why there were no bag limits, but due to limited time, I am limited to explain in detail this point. Number two, there was no economic impact statement done. What are the impacts on subsistence fishermen during these inflated times and inflated gas prices? What are the impacts on commercial fishermen and the consumers? You are slowly cutting off our food supply and cutting fish out of our diet. The phrase we hear, we not telling you, you cannot fish. So what you telling us? We gotta eat only Papa'a and Hinalea? Number three, there is no scientific evidence that proves a decline in Uhu and Kala due to fishing. It is clear that fishermen are the easy target when attempting to protect and preserve resources. Instead of investigating the true story, what really is happening in the ocean, and working to increase biomass as stated in the past by the Native Hawaiian Gathering Rights Association. Number four, another excuse used was more herbivores are needed to help the reef grow because the reef is dying. When you tell a half-truth, it is a lie. Some scientists claim the reef is dying. Although through the course of nature, there have been reef bleaching events, the scientists fail to acknowledge and point out that the reef and coral continue to grow on a massive scale every second of the day. No matter how many fishermen you stop from fishing, you're not gonna make the sun cooler. In conclusion, there are both natural marine and invasive predators that eat more Uhu and Kala than man. Man is part of the ecosystem and top of the food chain. The major disconnect is that man is not as important than any other predator in the ocean. Mahalo.
Hey, mahalo.
Hello, brother.
Aloha.
Thank Jesus, I get to come over here and share. You know, that God created all these things for us.
Can you please state your name?
Oh, my name is Kupuna Judy Caporina.
Mahalo.
Okay. I always forget my name. Anyway, I want you to know that everything in the ocean is giving to us. Now they're trying to take away our food. It's so expensive nowadays, brother. All the fish, the crab, hey, no can do that. We are the people of Hawaii. I'm a Hawaiian. I was raised up in Hawaii, and you know what? Eh, everything you think your needs, your needs. And then they're trying to cut us short. No. I will go fight it. I will fight it. Because why? Our na- our natural people today is having a hard time. They don't have more jobs. Everything be taken away. We're the Hawaiian islands. We are Hawaiians, and they're trying to rip us off. What for? For money, for money. Make guinea pigs out of. I want you to hear it. I want them to all hear it. Because why? No can hide. I no can hide nothing. I'm in the eighties already. Hey, Jesus is the one that keeps me, keeps all my family, keeps us, the Hawaiians. We have to fight for everything, everything. Why? Hawaii is Hawaiian islands. Hawaii is Hawaiian islands. We are the first ones. You know, all those that waking us the roofs is our enemies, enemies before. Now they getting all that, they sitting up. That's why I gotta share this with you, brother. Because God says in his word, one of us is Adam and Eve. How you like that one, brother? That's where we came from. We connected. We should share. We should do whatever God says to do, to take care of our loved ones. Our time is short. You know the when you're gonna go home, but you know what? The main thing, they know the truth. God made the heaven and earth. This is why I cry. I cry because why? Because we all have to cry for something that belongs to us. It's so simple.
Yeah, mahalo, Auntie.
So I have to share this with you, with all of those that they can hear, all of those that can get eyeballs. I don't like to see it like this. I want to see your eyeballs, the color of your eyeballs. When I talk, you know why? It's no cartoon. Everybody thinks cartoons. No, it's not, brother. So I needed to share with you. I love you. I love everybody. I learned that you gotta love your neighbor as yourself. That's the way I was brought up, brother.
Thank you.
Our style was to take care of each other. I needed to share that with you. I love you, brother. Jesus bless you and bless all those that hear it. And Jesus, amen.
Mahalo.
Okay, brother. You get question for me.
No questions. Mahalo.
Aloha.
Aloha.
Hey, how's it?
Hey, how's it?
Uh, my name is Joseph Akaka. Um, and I am here to oppose the plan that was set. Um, and, and the reason I oppose is because I don't believe putting limitations on the fish going help with whatever you guys trying to do. Um, you guys won't put limitations on us, but you know, I don't see any limitations on planning the predators that stay inside the ocean. Yeah, you get, what, you get the shark, you get the barracudas, you get the roos, you even get the seal. And they're gonna be fishing year-round, twenty-four-seven, whenever they're like, you know, picking choose, oh, I like mani ni today, I like kala today. But, uh, Aska is not can because we getting rules, so I believe that this plan is not right for us, um, and I oppose the plan. Um, and I am the future generation for this, for, for speaking for planning people. Um, I am the one that actually go out there and fish, dive, join it all. And, you know, we know what get in ocean, we know that the ground is healthy. Um, big kind pile of kala's, big kind pile of maninis. And not everybody eat the same thing, not everybody kala every time, or mani ni. Sometimes when we go camping, you go see maybe one, two kala on the fire. And this is for feed, like six families, everybody just like taste little bit at a time, so. Yeah, that's all I have to say. So yeah, I oppose, I oppose.
Hey, thank you.
Hi. I'm Joseph Akaka. Um, I was not born and raised on Molokai, but, uh, my husband has, and so has his father, I mean, his mother and his grandfather, and, um, my husband has taught us and my kids a lot about the fishing and gathering rights, and like, uh, the Kupuna that said earlier, food here is very expensive. A lot of our food comes from the ocean. A lot of our food comes from the, the mountains. And if we don't have those things and you create bag limits on those things, my kids will starve. And that's something as a mother and a parent is a very touching subject because that's the last thing I want is my kids to be starving because there's bag limits. And that's why I oppose this proposal that you guys are trying to push forth. Thank you.
Hey, mahalo.
Sorry, we get some more.
Okay.
Hey, how's it?
How's it?
My name is Dicky Stone, uh, from Island of Molokai, live in the homestead of Holihua. Um, yeah, I oppose, um, of these rules that you guys making, um, on these bag limits and, and stuff like that. Um, I think we should, um, you know, maybe an exemption for Molokai. Um, because, um, that's how we live, that's what we live on. I, I remember times where, but there were no jobs and we had to, um, you know, my dad, there was, um, slow on work. You know, we used to live off the, the land, you know, and deer, fishing like that, but, um, you know, I'm already following you guys' first rules that you guys made. You know, so follow those rules, and I think they've, they've been pretty good, um, so far. Uh, but, um, yeah, I, um, I'm a throw netter, you know? And if I do catch a little bit more than, than the limit, I, I even share. You know, if I catch too much, I, I went on the street with the, the Kupunas. So the, the, the fish that I catch is, is never wasted. Um, a lot of times when we catch a lot would be like, um, funerals or wedding, um, baby parties. And then we go out, out of there and doing that every time. No, it's, it's, um, and I drove a lot around on Molokai and I never see it like, yeah, there's, there's a lot of fish here. You know, and, uh, but, um, but that's it. I just came to, um, to oppose. And, um, that's it. Thank you.
Iran, mahalo.
Aloha. My name is Yama Kaholo Awa. Okay, and I oppose through the rule making. Okay, and my reason for that, first of all, I would like to make a recommendation with DLRN. That you guys come to Molokai, you guys need to speak to every Moko. Because every Moko manage their resources different from other Mokos. That's a recommendation I would like you folks to do, okay? And then administrating, and the question is, for me, who comes up with all these administration rules?
We, we can't answer questions during this public testimony time, but if you make that as a comment, we can address that comment.
On, on, well, before, before you guys can come up with administration rules, you guys had to come to the community and sit down, and we're going kuka, kuka, and we're going to look for the best solution of how to manage our resources, okay? Not for DLRN, okay? DLRN or anybody else or the legislature shouldn't be, shouldn't be the one to decide how we're going to manage our resources. And then, so what's the reason that you guys, now you guys coming up with all this new administrative, administration rule that is going to infringe on us as native Hawaiians? And that's on the, the article top, Section seven Constitution. How are you guys going to address that? And you, uh, this is the state law. The, the state constitution, okay, that's you guys. And the other question, who is going to enforce the, the law? Yeah, because I personally don't trust, um, DLRN. Okay, I can give you many reasons. Yeah, give you one good example. Yeah, they pour eighty yards of concrete in Omomi without a call of engineer permit. And I make a complaint to DLRN on Maui. They come assess the, uh, the complaint, been there twenty years. Yeah, what about all the reproduction that were damaged there on our EOR? Eight yards of concrete, yeah? And so DLRN made the statement that that person won't have to go and clean it up. So they fined him two thousand dollars. They've been in there two year, twenty years. And, and they believe in our resources, and what they got, just a slap on the wrist. What even made it worse? Yeah, yeah, I called Tiger Mills from DLRN at, um, here after, the concrete, the concrete still in there. When they want to take it out? You know what she told me? DLRN gave them the permit after the fact. So you tell me, you guys go make rules and laws, and you guys cannot even keep it. That's why you know who, you know who should make the law and who, and who, who monitor the people is the people of Dali. So us here Molokai, we manage, oh, that's why we have a lot of our resources. And then, so we hear about people, what about the people that come to Molokai? Yeah, that's you guys problem. Yeah, you guys find a way that they cannot come here and fish. Yeah, with this resource, it belong to us. The ocean belong to you guys. Yeah.
Mahalo.
Yeah, so, and then, because you know why? Because when they gonna come here, when they gonna overhaul it, they gonna have a problem. And why should we, you know, want end up in jail when it's DLRN's responsibility?
Mahalo, Koyama. Um, if we have time after everyone has a chance to testify, you can add.
When you're talking about life and death, and you're talking about, may I, all my company have seven children, thirty-five grandchildren, eighteen great-grandchildren, you taking away food for my family, you creating a problem. And I look at this as a threat, okay? So you guys better think about it good. So as one of the advice, I want to put across you, because I'm a lavaia, yeah, I'm a, I'm a nana. Okay, that's, that's the point I have. So you guys need to take that into consideration.
Thank you, guys. That's it for Molokai.
Okay, thanks. Next, we're gonna take any in-person testimony on Maui. Russell. Any testifiers on Maui?
Yeah, mahalo. David, we have two people in attendance, but neither one wishes to testify.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and then next, we're gonna take Zoom testimony. So if you have registered for the Zoom, um, we're gonna presume that you're interested in providing testimony. Uh, we're gonna be calling names in the order that people have signed up. Um, if we call you and you do not wish to provide oral testimony, just let us know, or you can, um, put a message in the chat feature. Okay. So first person, I have, uh, Edwin Taniguchi. Yeah, I don't see in the Zoom room. Howard Rodriguez. Kaapuni Iwohi. Daryl Tanaka. Let's see. Daniel Lint. Stan Rudis. Jessica Parker. Scott Crawford. Sibyl Lopez. Uh, Clayton Kubo, you want to provide testimony? If not, moving on, Mahisa Deng. Would you like to provide testimony?
Hello?
Yep, uh, you just muted yourself, but you can unmute. So you just muted yourself again.
Hello, I, I don't know if we use this. Hello?
Okay, yeah, we can hear you now. Oh, you just muted yourself again, I'm sorry. Just click it once.
What, what do I do? I just hold the button?
Um, you can.
I, I'm holding the button, I'm just hold the button.
I don't think you need to hold it, but it's working now, so go ahead. Oh, now it's not working. I think you just, you click it once, and that should be able to unmute yourself. Okay, go ahead.
I'm, am, am I in?
Yep.
Yeah, for the common order bag limit, like me, I disagreed everything. You guys said, you guys said no more knocking out there. Get planning out there. I don't know where you guys looking. I know before everybody used to say, oh, yeah, all the kala used to be all, you know, here, there, on the shore. They're not there anymore. They're, they're, they're more out to sea. There's a lot. And what is this? You guys doing the kala bag limit and not put a mani ni in the kala? What, what, why, what, why is that? You know what I mean? You guys going to start bag, bag limit everything in the future? All the local people going to start buying fish from the foreign people? They get one fish market coming up in, um, where's that, Kali? Um, where's that? Seafood City? Yeah, in the future, people going to be buying from the, they're going to be supporting from the foreign people and from the Asian people. You guys going to be doing this? The local people going to end up with nothing. As I got to say. Aloha.
Hey, thank you. Aloha. Next, we have Philamon Sadang. Go ahead. Uh, please unmute yourself.
Hold on. Okay, you're on, Dan.
Aloha. Yeah, you're on.
Aloha. I see all the comments here. Molokai people, I sympathize with them. But what I, what I would suggest, um, it's a couple season. Whenever the fish spawn, that's when you don't take. Or local commercial don't take. You have to work with that. If either commercial don't take, for everybody takes. Because when they spawning, I think we don't have the right to take them. Because that's when we can increase the population of fish. It's called couple season when they spawn. That's my comment on this, um, ocean resource. Make something where it's spawning season, nobody take, or limited, really take, limited amount. For own consumption in a couple seasons. We gotta work with that. That's what my subject is. Aloha.
Hey, thank you. Aloha. See, next, we have Jacob Sadang. I don't see, uh, Ben Wallen. Go ahead.
Aloha, Ben Wallen. Um, I'm in a, uh, you want me to start my video?
Uh, yeah, that'd be good. Thanks.
My name's Ben Wallen. Um, I'm in majority of opposition of the proposed rules. I'm not real clear on this new format of, um, how things are getting established with this new public hearing. It seems a little bit of a, of a flop. I mean, two people showed up publicly and a handful of people showed up online. It doesn't seem like a very good representation, but that's a whole nother story. Um, my main opposition point on rules regarding that are being proposed is the is the, where's the science on the actual takes and the, the number of pounds for the commercial take? You know, our population has changed so much in Hawaii. So many um, people want to eat seafood, but our reef is not, is not big enough to support our population into the future. And so, yeah, here we got to establish rules, bag limits, size limits. But the way it's been established, it doesn't seem like it's aligning with the science. So if we don't have enough fish, why are we going to allow hundreds of fish to be taken for a commercial? But then somebody throwing a party for their family, they only can take two color, two ooh. But they gotta go to the store to buy the rest of it. It just doesn't align with the subsistence and the gathering rights and the cultural practices of Hawaii. Um, I don't know what the answer is, but to me, it, it seems, and I've always said that, you know, the take of and sale of commercial reef fish. And you know, I know there's Uku and there's yellow spot and Akuli and Opelu all got to be taken a look at a little differently. But that's kind of my main opposition point. Another one is, when I grew up, I learned to poke fish, it was mani's in the pond, in the rock piles. And you know, how I'm going to tell my kids, my nephews and nieces, oh, no, you cannot poke that mani me, it's only three inches. You gotta go find the six inch one. Well, the six inch one is so far offshore. It's not going to happen. So there needs to be some thought about that, you know? It just doesn't seem to be aligning. It seems like it's kind of a try to catch all, let's make it another inch longer. Well, when you poking mani in the water, five and a half inches to six, that's a pretty hard measurement to figure out. You cannot just go over there and measure it. So I think it needs to be talked about more of, how much can you take and what is the purpose of your take? If your purpose is to surround the whole school of mani and take the whole school, so you can go sell it in the market, that's one thing. But if your purpose is to take enough for your family to eat, 200 mani's, 200 mani. I mean, it doesn't really make a lot of sense to me. I agree with the spawning comment that Uncle just made. But anyway, good luck, you guys. This is to me, good effort. But it kind of in my, in my opinion, it's kind of fell on its face. And it needs to go back to a little bit more of getting some feedback from the community. Because it seems like a lot of people just are too busy or it wasn't, I don't know. I don't know what the answer is. Maybe people are too busy or they don't care. Aloha, thank you for the opportunity, though. Appreciate it.
Hey, mahalo. Moving on, Sibyl Lopez, do you want to provide testimony?
Um, yeah, I call mine. I just came out of one meeting and I got to hop into this meeting, so. Um, I just to start my video. Okay, aloha. My name is Sibyl Lopez. I am the sovereign council of the Hawaiian House, Homestead Association's vice chair. It's a statewide entity that serves 28,000 people on the wait list and 10,000 people on the land across the Paeina. I specifically represent the Shaw Molokai Kapuna, which we have about 11 plus homestead associations here on our island. Um, and we strongly oppose. Um, it's, it's the point that, you know, you guys attacking our subsistence type of living and especially coming from a rural island like Molokai. Um, that, that's how majority of us live, live by. You know, it's so hard understanding that almost 90% of our, our goods and services are imported. If a natural disaster would occur, we only have seven to 10 days at most of food here capable of survival. Other than that, we really got to live off the land. And during COVID, it really taught us to go back to our old ways. Um, and how it used to be and how our kapunas used to teach us on how to gather, how to hunt, how to fish. Um, you know, for our survival. Yeah, walking into our grocery stores here today, a gallon of milk is about $10 a gallon. You know, and then you add them up to buy bread and milk, you know, it's already hard suffering. And being able, like I said, subsistence is, is our go-to. Yeah, and, and we feel that this plan is attacking our subsistence and our way of life. And allowing commercial people to come in, to buy a license and to go and fish in these areas. And while we, meaning subsistence, we live off the land. We provide for our families and put food on the table, you know? And, and even for those who cannot, like our kapunas who cannot fish anymore, we also provide for them. Our kekis is what we teach them, how, how do we have life is here, how to sustain themselves? You know, how to learn how to fish, how to dive, how to hunt? And we start our kids off as young as eight years old. And so, you know, I, I don't know why the state feels it absolutely necessary to come and fringe upon our subsistence gathering, our native Hawaiian rights, as how we've learned. It's a generational knowledge that's been passed on, it's generational versus institutional. And this kind of stuff got to change and got to stop in a way that you guys got to change your paradigm self of thinking to incorporate cultural and how we able to manage our own lifestyle and subsist on our own way. Um, the herbivore management plan doesn't show me that. Um, you know, we need to provide more data, more historical data, more generational data that, that we have that will solidify us of being able to continue pretty much a rite of passage. Uh, I don't know if GATRI is on with the native wine gathering rights, but they did send out a petition. So a petition, you know, really, really looking at, you know, subsistence itself. And we're here also working with the Sustainable Molokai who deployed their subsistence survey. That was the last survey that has been done on Molokai was in 1993 when Governor Kayatano decided to do a subsistence catch for Molokai. So now Sustainable Molokai has been taking that up. And now they've been deploying a 2023 subservis just for Molokai to see our lifestyle, to see our culture and how the people of Molokai really subsist. And you know, the compilation of data from how it was in 1993 to 2023. So that survey going in, in August, and so we'll be able to see that data. And we're hoping with that data, with Native Hawaiian Gathering Rights petition, that we can tell you folks to, to aole, stop what you guys doing and really think about who you guys really hurting and the people of this place. So mahalo.
Hey, mahalo. Is there anyone else on the Zoom that would like to provide testimony that has not had the opportunity? Please raise your hand or turn on your video. Let us know. Okay. Seeing none, we still have some time left. Is there anyone who has testified that wishes to provide additional testimony? I'll start off.
I also want to say something briefly because I got a name. Um, but the, the, also the point is to that.
For the record, state your name again.
Sibyl Lopez, Sibyl Lopez on Molokai. Um, how come you guys don't have a public hearing on Molokai? I know this is for Maui Nui and Maui Nui is considered Maui Molokai and Lanai. But we really want representation here to host a public hearing here on our island of Molokai. Um, in person would be primarily what we want. But you guys don't have anything for Molokai as far as this public hearing, only this platform right here. And I would believe that you would have way more representation than just me here today. So mahalo.
Hey, mahalo. Um, so let's go back to the in-person Lanai site. Adam, is there anyone else there that wants to provide testimony?
Nope, none here, David.
Okay, we'll go back to the in-person Molokai hearing site. Christie, is there anyone else that wants to add to their testimony or provide testimony? Okay. No more. Sorry, I, I'm not getting your audio, but I assume that means zero.
No, no, can you hear us?
Yeah, now I can.
No, we're good.
Okay, and then let's go back to the Maui in-person public hearing site. Russell?
We're good over here. No one.
Okay. Hey, persons unable to attend today or wishing to present additional comments may mail written testimony to us by Monday, August 14th, 2023. Please mail your testimonies to the Department of Land and Natural Resources, Division of Aquatic Resources, 1151 Punch Bowl Street, Room 330, Honolulu, Hawaii 96813. Written testimony may also be submitted by email to dlnr.aquatics@hawaii.gov. And those addresses are shown at the bottom of this slide. This is the projected timeline for these rules after this public hearing. The dates are estimates, assuming that no significant changes to the proposal need to be made based on the testimony received. Um, if changes do need to be made, the timeline would get pushed back. Based on the testimonies presented, the department will submit its findings and recommendations to the Board of Land and Natural Resources. If approved by the board, the Department of the Attorney General will conduct a final legal review. And if approved, the proposed rules will be given to the governor for his final approval. Should the governor grant approval, certified copies will be filed with the Lieutenant Governor's Office. And after 10 days, it becomes effective as law. Is there any questions about this process? Hey, on behalf of the Board of Land and Natural Resources and the Division of Aquatic Resources, mahalo for attending this public hearing. It is now 6:32 PM and this public hearing is now adjourned. Thank you for taking time out of your day to participate in this public hearing. Aloha.